Good afternoon, everyone. I would like to call the meeting to order. The time is 1 o'clock.
I'll go ahead.
Yeah, I was gonna say, Ms. Shannon Ramides, if you can please confirm a quorum.
Yes, ma'am. We have trustee Dr. Mackey, we have trustee Steen, we have vice chair Romero, and yourself. We have a quorum, ma'am.
Mr. Johnson, can you please, Ms. Johnson, I'm sorry, please proceed with the safety message invocation and pledge of allegiance.
So, good afternoon. So, first, we wanted to review the evacuation procedure so that we are prepared to be safe in the event of an emergency. If you hear the fire alarm, follow the instructions announced through the PA system. If asked to evacuate, use a glass door exiting out of the boardroom to the outside. If that door is blocked, use the back door. Verbally alert others in the room and evacuate. Then move to the main parking lot in front of the building or the AT&amp;T parking lot over the McCullough and Brooklyn Bridges. In the event of a situation like this, our security team will be monitoring the situation and will notify the appropriate emergency services and team members. We also have employees nearby who are trained to administer for state of needed. Safety is a top priority at CPS Energy, and while we hope this information is never needed, we want to be sure we are always ready. So, will you please stand with me for invocation? For a quiet moment, I invite you to express gratitude for our health, for our families and our friends, and for the opportunity to come together as a community today. We honor our trustees for the responsibility they bear. We wish them success today in making decisions with wisdom and humility. We are reminded that we are all stewards acting on behalf of our customers. May we accomplish our goals together with that singular purpose in mind. Amen. Now, please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, true, under God, indivisible, with liberty and all.
Public comment, Ms. Liliana Carpenter. Can you please facilitate it?
Yes, ma'am. Public comment provides an opportunity for members of the public to share thoughts on any of this meeting's posted agenda items. We'll invite pre-registered speakers to speak, and they may only address the board on CPS Energy-related business listed on the posted agenda. Speakers should state their first and last name, the organization or group they represent, and the agenda item that they are going to speak about. For this meeting, we have four in-person speakers. Each speaker will have two minutes to speak. Thomas, will you please cue the timer? Our first speaker is Ms. Henrietta LaGrange, followed by Mr. Cordell Jones.
My name is Henrietta LaGrange, member of the Mulberry Street Girl Gang and Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, CEO Rudy Garza. I am sticking to a script which is not easy for me. It's a blessing dressing this board today. I would like to discuss Senate Bill 1110 to do with the reimbursement of money collected by CPS Energy and then reimbursed to the city of San Antonio to good use in many different projects. First of all, the senator is Charles Schwarzenegger and Phil King. Those are some of the members. One of the, Senator Schwarzenegger has no experience running such a program. Another thing, his reputation is not impeccable. He has faced drunk-driving charges. He was accused of sending unwanted sexual photos. Now, all of this is public record, not making this up. He was appointed by Lieutenant Governor Dan Patrick. I know CPS Energy is the leading plaintiff against ERCOT. Why the senator should disqualify himself, it is a conflict of interest. He himself is known to have his own utility company. Who's to know what his rates are? Probably more than CPS Energy. I personally think he asked the lieutenant governor to appoint him because of his own utility company that he owns. Blessings to all, respect Henrietta LaGrange. And as I go out in the public and I see all my CPS workers, this is what they get. Thank you. Thank you from all my CPS workers.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mr. Cordell Jones, followed by Mr. Raymond Savala. Mr. Raymond Savala?
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Mayor. I'm here to tell you that if I was to rate your safety performance, you'd be getting an F today. Last week, I had one of your employees come into my yard unannounced. My truck was in front. He knew people were there. The door was open. The screen door was locked. However, he never bothered to knock on my door, never showed me a badge, did not identify himself. Anybody can buy a yellow vest and a white helmet. This kind of action is totally unacceptable. My lights went out as we were dining, having breakfast in the morning. I went outside, and there's this guy with his back to me. He had already removed the old meter and installed the smart meter. Now, there was an act of extortion for me to get the old meter back because CPS wants me to pay 175. I told the gentleman right there and then, put it back. No response other than, I'm gonna call my supervisor. Well, I called CPS and I complained. Well, we're gonna take care of it, sir. I said, I will keep that smart meter if you can provide me with a certificate of conformance. Mr. Vera called me back a week later. I asked him for the COC, certificate of conformance. And what that is, ladies and gentlemen, every manufacturer that provides a product in the United States has to have a certificate of conformance, letting people know what the flash point is, what the internal parts are made out of. Why can't I get one? I had to educate Mr. Vera. To me, that's unacceptable. As far as safety, had I not been a responsible person, one of your employees could have ended up getting hurt. So, it's up to you to enforce the safety and identify yourselves. Thank you.
Thank you. Our final speaker is Ms. Sandra Crocker.
Good afternoon, trustees, Chairman Mao, excuse me, Madam Chair, Mayor, and others. The last board meeting, much ado, is made about the extraordinary achievement of a Latina and a Latino in the top two positions of one of the largest municipal monopolies in the nation. Is this really such a shock? Or is this what Thomas Sowell refers to as a bigotry of low expectations? While there appears, where there is the appearance of adversity, there is a, sorry. While there's appearance of a diversity, there is a lack of diversity of thought on this board and in the RAC and the other community advisory committee. And I would encourage you to broaden your reach, and we need to hear from people that have different perspectives. There is no voice for the people that are impacted by the mining of lithium and uranium. There is no voice for the thousands, tens of thousands of birds that are killed daily by the wind turbines. I would like to see a more diverse and robust discussion when moving forward with this carbon-zero agenda, which is a suicide pact. Thank you.
That was our final speaker. I will now return the meeting to Chair Gonzalez.
Thank you, everybody who spoke. Item number four, which is, of course, the chair's remarks. Good afternoon and welcome, everyone, to April 3rd, 2023 Board of Trustees meeting. Before we get onto the business agenda, I want to make a few comments concerning my role as the presider of the board meeting. Board meetings and my expectations as a board chair concerning how board members should interact and work together. As the presider of meetings, my goal is to have an orderly and efficient meeting so that our important work as board trustees can get done. Working with our staff at CPS, I will ensure we comply with applicable law and that we use Robert rules to guide our proceedings so that we must run an orderly meeting. As a board chair, I hope that the entire board of trustees can use the established board governance committee process, board meetings, and access to myself and CPS staff to have an open dialogue and work collectively toward the greater good of CPS Energy. This does not mean we will agree on everything. I fully recognize there will be differences of opinion, and the board votes may reflect those differences. However, we need to discuss issues constructively and work toward an environment where we treat each other with professional courtesy and respect. It is my hope, as your chair, that the board will spend its valuable time together focusing on forward progress. The issues facing CPS Energy and our obligation to our customers require this approach. I look forward to working with my fellow CPS staff and optimistic we are up to the task. With that, we will not, excuse me. With that, we will move forward to the business agenda today. With that said, does any board members have any questions or comments?
Yes, Madam Chair. A few minutes ago, I received...
We can't hear you.
A few minutes ago, I received something from the update on changes to board policy processes and changes to agenda. I agree with everything you said. And if you would like, I would like to ask you if you would put this agenda at the next board meeting on the agenda. This changes to board meeting processes and changes to agenda.
Shannon, can you repeat the request?
Yes, as I understood it, he was in receipt of a board meeting creation earlier today and would like to put the same topic of discussion up on the agenda for next month's meeting.
I would take it into consideration. Next item on the agenda, number five. I will turn the meeting over to Dr. Romero for the RAC update.
Okay, thank you. RAC continues its work now on the rate design project. And I'm sorry I could not be there in person at the last meeting, and I won't be there in person for the next one because I teach on Thursdays, and it takes, it's easier for me to just do it online instead of the half-hour back and forth it would take me to come. But after that, I am back in person. But I did watch the meeting online, and it was another great discussion. Staff provided really good feedback and information on the customer base, the different types of customers we have and how that's distributed. Talked about the energy assistance programs and also about rate decoupling, which I think was important because members of the community have been asking about something on rate decoupling and why we haven't considered it yet. So, that is, that work is continuing. It's focusing on the affordability piece, on bill relief, on conservation and demand management. It's a little bit more unwieldy than some of the earlier discussions, but I think our chair has it, Reed Williams, has it well under control. And so, one of the items today is for a very, I think, a fairly minor amendment of the RAC bylaws. So, Ms. Ramirez, if you could present those, and I'm gonna have a question about that as well.
Yes, ma'am. Just as a reminder to the group, the RAC committee members' term is set in Section 4 of the bylaws. Prior to the changes, the way the bylaws are written, they are appointed for two, two-year terms and may serve no more than three consecutive terms. The change proposed in the bylaws would simply add a provision that acts as a carryover or a holdover provision, I think is how they're commonly referred to. They're used quite often on boards and with elected bodies. It allows so that any RAC member that is appointed will serve until that RAC member submits the recommendation to the Board of Trustees on the rate restructure. That's the final end date. But it allows that person who has an expired term, so the end of the two years comes, they can continue to serve in a holdover capacity until either the earlier of the date that their successor is appointed to fulfill or the RAC itself is dissolved, so.
Couple of questions on that because there were some questions from a RAC member that were sent to all of RAC last night, and I just want to clarify some of those things. The change that you just described, if you could just say again, it is not that we are reappointing RAC members, it is that we are simply extending their term?
Yes, ma'am. And it is, right now, because the RAC was formed within the last two years, a big chunk of the folks would need to be reappointed by April 22nd, 2023, and they are in mid-deliberation now on an issue. So, this simply allows for those folks that are on the RAC right now to continue past that date until either the resolution of the current issue that is before them, which is the rate restructure or appointment of their successor.
Okay, thank you. And then, the second question. There were some questions about other parts of the RAC bylaws, and it's my understanding that we simply cannot be discussing those at this time because they are not agendized and they're not being subjected to any changes at this point. Perhaps RAC can discuss one of those in the future, and we can provide more information as we consider it as a board. But as of now, we cannot discuss any other questions that were brought up.
Correct, ma'am.
Okay. So, I am ready to make a motion for approval of that change in the bylaws.
Are there any other comments or questions? If so, do I have a motion to approve item number 5A? I was gonna read it. The amendment, that's okay. I know you're super excited. Cool. The amendment to RAC bylaws. Is there, how about a second? So, it was a first by Dr. Romero and a second by Dr. Mackey. Now, the next item we're gonna discuss is B, Underway Advisory Committee.
Real quick, ma'am. I just want to make sure. We want to go through discussion and vote on that matter?
Yeah, sure. Is there a discussion? Okay, no discussion. Now, vote?
Go ahead and poll the trustees. Trustee Dr. Mackey?
Trustee Steen?
Yes.
Mayor? Vice Chair?
Yes.
Chair?
Yes. Thank you.
Motion carries.
Under item number five, Rate Advisory Committee update, we're now gonna discuss member nomination of Ms. Anne Kennard.
It's him. Oh, sorry, thank you. With Miriam Junket. And to give you a little more detail about her, unfortunately, she couldn't be here today. She did attend the RAC meeting earlier in the month just since public can attend. So, she's already kind of getting used to them. But she is a member of the City of San Antonio's Climate Action and Adoption Plan Technical Advisory Committee. She has 20 years of experience in environmental science and public outreach, and she's been employed by Southwest Research for over 20 years. So, I think she'll be a great member to have with us. And with that, we will ask for approval.
Just want to make sure. I was clarifying because I know I have one thing on my agenda, and then the presentation had a different name. So, I was like, but thank you, it's been clarified. So, again, any discussion by fellow trustees? Mayor?
No, I just wanted to thank Miriam for stepping forward. Once again, she's been a volunteer in a number of different, number of our different efforts in bringing her expertise and experience from Southwest Research Institute to Bear. And so, thank you to Miriam for her participation in this. This will be probably the most cumbersome of the activities she's been involved with for us, but I think she's up to the task. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for those comments. Yes, sir.
Is she here today?
No, sir. She was traveling today. She wasn't able to attend.
Well, I think Mr. Steen always does a really good job to make comments or also to get to know who those members are. Maybe we can have an opportunity for her to, you know, meet with us just to get to know her.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
On that note, any further discussion before we vote?
You still need a motion, ma'am?
Okay. To approve item 5B?
So moved.
Okay. First motion by the mayor and second by Dr. Romero?
Chair Dr. Mackey?
Do roll call?
I'm sorry. Chair Dr. Mackey, I time-traveled. I apologize, trustee Dr. Mackey.
Trustee Steen? Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Chair?
Yes.
Chair Gonzalez?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
I have something that I want to...
Oh, I'm sorry, sir.
So, she's replacing Dr. Femi Ostadelli?
Yes, sir.
And I think he did an excellent job on the RAC. I was just talking with Ms. Kennard earlier about it, about what a great contribution he made. And so, I think it's some meeting we ought to try to somehow acknowledge him in some form or fashion. We ask people from our community to serve on these committees, and they spend hours and hours and hours working on it. And just like to do something to, maybe we could get him here or something like that.
I agree. I mean, again, this is a volunteer position. And again, everybody comes from a different point of view, but at the end of the day, they're all trying to do the good work. And I, again, agree with Mr. Steen about finding a way to recognize him. Yes, Mr. Ram?
Thank you, trustee Steen. I totally forgot to make mention of the great work that Femi has done. I've talked to him a number of times, and he's reluctantly have, has other obligations now, but he's been making an incredible contribution to our work, particularly on this RAC, where he brought an extensive knowledge of not only energy systems, but also how they interact with water to Bear. So, thank you again, Femi, for all the great work.
Okay. Ms. Ramides, can you please take the board into executive session?
Yes, ma'am. It is 1:23. At this time, the board is going to recess into executive session to discuss matters that have been duly posted under several provisions of Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code, including deliberations and other authorized action on real property, specifically 3330 Cherry Ridge under Section 551.072, deliberations and other authorized action on real property regarding Churye Substation under Section 551.072, deliberations, voting, or taking final action on competitive matters under Section 551.086, 1:23. So, we go into executive session.
Oh, wait for the mayor or we can go ahead and go. Ms. Ramirez, if you could please bring the board back to, from executive session. We're here already. If you can go ahead and.
Yes, ma'am. It is 2:16 PM and the board has concluded executive session. I can confirm that there were no votes taken and no matters were discussed that were not part of the posted agenda. We do have a quorum and all members are present.
Thank you. We will now move to agenda item number seven, which is the consent agenda. The items on the consent agenda are as follows. A, minutes of the special board meetings held on January 23rd, 2023. B, minutes of the regular board meeting held on 01, again, January 30th, 2023. Payment to the city of San Antonio for February 2023. D, resolution for the sale of surplus property. E, procurement items, none.
Second.
Does the board have any questions or comments? Questions, comments? Okay. Then do I have a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda?
We have a motion and a second, ma'am, because we're ready for vote.
Okay. All in favor? Aye. Thank you. We will now move to agenda item number eight. 2020, 2024 additional financing opportunities. Mr. Corey Kowalski. Please proceed.
Thank you, Chair Gonzalez, and good afternoon, trustees. So a pretty brief update today. Two items on the agenda. I'll be talking about one additional financing opportunity that are called bond tenders. I'll explain that in just a moment. And the second item is really an administrative item that will help us enable the vote we had taken back in October to increase our commercial paper program to a billion dollars from the 700 million. So the objective will be to hit those real quick and then ask for a vote at the end of the presentation. So as I mentioned, the two items, that first one is called bond tenders. That's just jargon, but ultimately it is an opportunity for us to offer to buy back certain types of bonds from investors and then reissue a different type of debt, creating a savings. So we'll talk on the first one, these bond tenders. Ultimately, what we've seen is the financial market conditions have changed over the last six months. They've continued to change in a way that's opportunistic for CPS and it provides an opportunity for us to take this action, to buy back bonds from investors at a discount to us. So we have some taxable bonds that can be converted to tax exempt and that, those are the ones that are going to provide us the opportunity. Doing something like this certainly depends on the investor on the other side. Are they willing to do this activity? Historically, what we've seen from our financial advisors is, you know, 10 to 50% take rate on this. And for the items that we are identifying as potential candidates, should we be at the 50% rate, you're looking at about $58 million in savings that can be generated through this activity. But ultimately, this one's going to be dependent on investor appetite, but anything greater than zero would be a benefit for our customers. This is just a quick look at the different series that are the candidates. These three were issued as taxable for a variety of different reasons, but in any case, we believe them to be candidates where we can refund and issue tax exempt in its place. And so we're still doing some research on the first one, but in any case, we wanted to make sure we put the collective pool of potential candidates as opportunities for us to go out and ask investors. I'll use this opportunity to kind of talk about the headlines that we've seen, you know, around the financial markets and the volatility we've seen in the banking industry. Generally, we, you know, have been observing it from our perspective and the banks that we work and engage with. We haven't seen anything different from that respect and consider it something that we're just going to continue to monitor in the coming months as we lead up to these transactions. And from an investment perspective, any of the headline banks we've seen, any exposure we have is incredibly immaterial and insignificant relative to the size of our assets. So from that perspective, we just continue to monitor that situation as it pertains to this. We stay in close contact with our financial advisors who are, you know, here today as well. And that is my comment on that. And then I think the last thing we'll head to is the commercial paper program. What I'll mention is we're not changing the amount that we had increased previously from October from 700 million to a billion. What we're calling this companion program is what I said earlier. It's an administrative tool that's going to allow us to add the incremental liquidity that we talked about without having to break our old agreements. And the reason that's important is, again, the markets have changed in a way that when you look at our current agreements for the first 700, you know, they're locked in at certain costs. And if we were to go out into market now, what you're seeing is that those costs that we've locked in are lower than what you could potentially get, you know, from many of these national banks or local banks, whatever the case may be. So what this companion program does is it's a tool to let us put the new incremental deals and standalone, even if they're with similar banks or same banks, but we won't have to break open and renegotiate on that first 700. So it's ultimately a way to lock in and keep that favorable pricing now that we're seeing, you know, some of the current pricing being higher than that. So that's, like I said, it's administrative. There's no difference in numbers in terms of levels of approval. So we want to take that to the board as well. This slide summarizes the two items I mentioned. Both are going to require board approval and city council approval. So if today is successful and we get approval, we've partnered with the city and will likely go late April to city council as well to knock these two items as well. And then we'll, you know, in May, we'll try and do the bond tenders and continue to negotiate on the commercial paper program. So like I said, pretty brief presentation. This last slide here is just the request for approval on those two items. And with that, Madam Chair, I will turn it back over to you for the vote and/or any discussion.
Thank you very much. I'm sure you're going to have questions, so going to go ahead and open this up to questions and comments.
So, Mr. Kowalski, on the commercial paper program, why does this require approval of this board and the city council? Why does a move like this require that?
I'll vaguely answer it and then I'll defer to bond counsel who's here to ask, answer anything legally different. The current agreements that we have with the banks cite our program that's been approved by the board and city council as 700 million. And so with that vote, we would open up the existing liquidity agreements and both renegotiate the rates with them and identify the new cap that the board had approved. And we could do that. However, when you open them up, you open yourself up to negotiation again, and we want to protect those rates that we have. So again, administratively, we're creating a separate program around that. Hopefully that helps. If not, I know I got Clay right here.
Good afternoon. Clay Benford representing CPS Energy as bond counsel. Mr. Kowalski is correct. We are preserving the existing contracts that exist that go out in sometimes three, four, five years from now. And so in, under a program typically over its life, the market changes and you have different changes in conditions and requirements. And so we will oftentimes refresh these programs with amended and restated ordinances. In order to add to the liquidity, we have to go to the city council anyway, which is what we did in October. But in recognition that we have a market condition that would require us to keep those existing contracts outstanding as long as we possibly can, the preferred method is to start a standalone program next to it so that we will switch off from the old program to the new program as those contracts roll off and migrate. We would typically do this anyway, but having to go back and renegotiate those existing contracts that would require us to go from 700 million to a billion would require that we go back into them and modify at which point in time they could ask us to demonstrate market terms.
And then is there any downside to doing this? And I'm talking about the commercial paper companion program.
No, sir. It's actually the opposite.
Right. So, Mr. Kowalski, it was, we had to change booklets because of it, but you changed your presentation for today. And I looked back to see what was different about the commercial paper companion program. And the one thing you did was eliminate a bullet point that, so this is, this is why we changed all this. So you eliminated a bullet point that read, quote, "Our CP program provides us access to short-term lending to fund a portion of our capital program at lower variable rates." Right? That was in there and you took it out. So it's my understanding that commercial paper is typically used for financing, the financing of payroll, accounts payable, inventories and other short-term, and I emphasize short-term liabilities. Is that an accurate statement?
So I took that bullet out because it is a discussion we've had many times and I didn't want to reiterate the board, how we defined it. The commercial paper program, as we've used it, has been consistent. It funds our capital plan. It allows us to borrow in the near term shorter and doesn't put upon us the must-spend requirements if we issue long-term debt. And that's also a requirement that allows us to be flexible in how we issue debt. So you can use commercial paper, I suppose, for those items, but in our case, we fund our capital plan. Part of the capital plan is in fact labor. So, you know, anything that falls under spend towards capital will go towards that. So hopefully I've.
But why did you think about eliminating that?
Because we've defined it before and I didn't want to reiterate what that program was to the board. So I wanted to be respectful of time.
All right. But then you're confirming now that we use, we do use commercial paper to fund our capital program.
We've used that for years, yes.
Comments or questions?
Well, first, is Mrs. Steen finished?
I'm sorry.
Well, just moving to the bond tenders, the same thing. Any downside to doing this?
I don't believe so. There's only upside. Anything greater than zero means a savings for us.
And then just confirmed, does this in any way affect our debt capitalization metric, also known as debt to capitalization ratio?
It can help it.
All right. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
As always, excuse me, as always, I'd like to thank Corey, Mr. Garza, Corey and Mr. Benford for their due diligence on these items because I know you've called every board member and been over this material with them. And it's major savings to CPS Energy. And so I want to thank you all for that. And to be clear about the commercial paper, we've been using it strictly since I've been here for capital projects, right?
Yes, sir.
It's only, not for payroll, not for anything else benefits, but for capital projects, right?
Yes, in support of the capital plan.
I just want to make sure of that right there. So, hey, thank you all for a great job in finding the savings for the company. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further comments? Questions? Okay. Now, do I have a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Motion approved.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, trustees.
Thank you. So the next item is the 2023 end-of-the-year performance review.
Good afternoon, Chair. Trustees, thank you for the time. Good afternoon, Chair. Trustees, thank you for the time. So today, we'd like to update you on our end-of-year performance for last fiscal year '23, which is a majority of calendar year '22. We had an overall very solid year of performance, really supporting our community in the face of some unforeseen headwinds. So today, what we'd like to do is provide a, just a general summary of our program and where we ended up, highlight some of our accomplishments beyond just the measures, and go a little deeper into specifically our key results, which were new this year and really focused on feedback from the community on what mattered to them, as well as our tier-one metrics, which really are our benchmarkable industry standards. So overall, you know, just a little reminder, we do have an annual performance goal cycle where we focus on driving excellence to serve our customers. Again, these do include things, feedback that we get from the community on what is important to them, our key results and our tier-one. important to them, our key results, and our tier-one metrics, which are those industry standards and best practices. Want to note that we do set standards every single year to really stretch ourselves to perform at a high level that is expected from the community and our customers. I really want to thank the guidance from the option oversight committee this year as we're looking to update our measures going into '24, the guidance that they've really provided us to think about what's important to our community beyond just the numbers. So you can see at the bottom, overall, we achieved seven, I mean, seven of our eight key results and 10 of our 16 tier-one metrics. So we'll go into a little bit more detail now. Before I step into the specific key results, we want to highlight some accomplishments that you would see beyond just what is on our program, kind of connecting more with how we are listening to our community and really engaging with them. You know, this is a list of some of those. One I want to highlight is we dealt with over 12 major storms last year and led to 10 and a half million weather updates that we provide to our customers based upon the feedback that they received, that they really wanted to hear more from us in that way and got positive results. Additionally, I think one of our major things that we've accomplished with partnership from this board and the RAC was approval of our future generation resource planning, which really helps us to be successful long-term for our community and our customers. So focusing on our key results, and again, these are items that the community gave us feedback on that there's important that we moved directionally towards. Some of the ones I want to highlight is the work we did on grid management, specifically investing in our vegetation management program during about 700 miles this year, as well as improving the modernization of our grid to handle major events, specifically adding some of our reclosers. In addition, the supporting and expanding community that really highlights the work that our customer strategy did in partnership with COSA, giving $20 million in ARPA funds to our community members, as well as holding over 2,000 community events. You'll notice our IT modernization did not hit the goal that we had for last year. This is really around re-scoping our baseline project deliverables based upon understanding some security and some other factors. We are, it is a multi-year program, and we are believing we'll still be on track to hit that target by Q2 of this year. We turn and we look at the tier-one metrics. Again, these are those measures that we kind of do industry standards against to see how well, you know, effectively and efficiently we're delivering from an operational standpoint. We hit 10 out of our 16 that we had for this year. Some of the ones we want to highlight, our employee engagement was up again this last year based upon the work that we've been doing around one-team culture, as well as our reliability metrics from the grid. So specifically, our SAFI, which is interruptions from a frequency standpoint, and SADI, which is the duration, were both up again back to that investment we've made in the reclosers and the vegetation management. Areas of opportunity for those that we didn't meet this year beyond the financials, as I think we've discussed previously, our customer satisfaction will still see a lagging impact from some of the higher bills, the higher fuel prices and temperatures. The team is continuing to engage and work with our community to find them support and reach out in new ways. As well as our portfolio commercial ability, this is around our power generation plants, and are they available when we need them, specifically when prices are high? I think this highlights the high usage we've had, the aging units and the extreme weather. Again, I think that's why important the work that we've done, the resource plan, to know where we're moving in the future. So in summary, overall, I believe we had a fairly solid year, specifically how we've turned to focus really on what matters to the customers and the community and highlight that. We obviously still have some areas that we're continuing to work on long-term around our customers and maintaining our mission to serve. And we look forward to continuing to work with the option oversight committee to update '24 measures, to make sure that they're aligned with what the board is looking for, as well as what our community is seeking and expecting from us.
Thank you, John. Does the board have any questions or comments? Yes, Mr. Steen.
So CPS Energy's fiscal year 2023 ended two months ago on January 31st. Included on the agenda for our last meeting was an item entitled Year in Financial Update. This was the agenda item I was not allowed to speak on. I did ask you, Mr. Garza, about the final numbers on our fiscal year 2023 tier-one metrics, and you replied that they weren't finalized. You've now provided the final numbers to your trustees, which was done on March 6th by email, and this item has been placed on today's agenda. So I appreciate your agendizing it. If you would put up Slide 6, please. So we now know that management failed to meet six out of the 16 metrics, and the six areas where our metrics were not achieved are up there. I'll just repeat them, but it was portfolio, commercial availability, PCA, customer satisfaction, residential, days cash on hand, debt capitalization, enterprise recordable instant rate, RIR, and enterprise readiness executive. So the bottom line is that CPS Energy's overall score at the end of the year is 10 out of 16, or 63. CPS Energy's tier-one metrics are often referred to as our report card, which means our final grade for fiscal year is, I regret to say, a D minus. By the way, I think our overall score might be considered lower than a 63 because of the way one of the metrics was set up, and let me explain. Tier-one metrics need to be calculated or calibrated so that they drive improvements and help CPS Energy focus its people and resources on what's important. To be effective, our metrics must be appropriately aspirational, challenging, and tough. As Ed Kelly liked to say, there should be no softballs. Hitting the target should mean our company is firing on all cylinders, that is, operating at the highest level. The fiscal year 2023 metric we used for senior lien bond ratings was set up to be met if all we did was merely maintain our current downgraded ratings, as well as the negative outlooks assigned us by two of the three credit rating agencies. So guess what happened? We set the target low and we met it. But our goals should have been at the absolute minimum to move the two negative outlooks to stable. Thus, in my mind, we didn't really achieve our metric for senior lien bond ratings because our target was not appropriately set at stretch level. Be that as it may, at our last fiscal year 2023 meeting, I'm sorry, at our meeting, at our last meeting, fiscal year 2023 was described as a strong year for CPS Energy. So what if one's child brought home a report card showing a 63 or a D minus average? Would one describe him or her as a strong student? In line with my fiduciary responsibilities as a trustee, I very much want management to succeed in getting CPS Energy's house in order. A good start is to acknowledge that our position is not strong, as was asserted at our last meeting, and perhaps not even solid, as you're maintaining today, and that CPS Energy needs to overcome significant challenges, financial and otherwise, to be considered strong or solid. So if you'll please put up Slide 3. So there it is for all to see, our grade of 62.5. I don't like dwelling on bad news, but we must be realistic about this and not pretend things are rosy when they're not. Management must be held accountable for this underperformance. So my question to you, Mr. Garza, with all due respect is this, would you please add as an agenda item for our next meeting, a more detailed report on why CPS Energy failed to meet six of our fiscal year 2023 tier-one metrics, and provide us with your comprehensive plan to rectify this situation in fiscal year 2024? And this is important without lowering, and in some cases, with even raising the bar on our tier-one metrics. I respectfully request that this statement be included in the minutes of today's meeting. And, Mr. Garza, your response?
My response is the chair sets the agenda, and if the chair decides she wants to put that on the agenda, that is her prerogative.
It's noted. Thank you. Any further questions or comments? Yes, trustee.
Hello. I think it would be helpful, I wanted to talk above these a little bit, and it might be helpful for the community to put this in context, and for me too, because I haven't talked to you in a while. Can you explain how key results and tier-one metrics interact with each other? Like, are they nested in some way? Are they completely different?
Yeah. So thank you for that question. So they both strive to help us achieve our strategic objectives that we see in Vision 2027 and ultimately deliver on our mission to our community. They look at them slightly different. The tier-one metrics basically look at how do we compare to other industry standards? How are other utilities comparing to us? Comparatively, the key results are really not so much how do we compare to other utilities? How are we meeting the expectations of our specific community? Are we delivering on what they are saying is important to us? And in a lot of ways, delivering on those key results sets us up to be successful long-term in those tier-one metrics. I think you see that in our reliability this year, where the work that we did with reclosers and vegetation management set up a good result from our reliability metrics for SAFI and SADI. Not always one-to-one. Sometimes it takes a few years to see that, but we believe it's making sure that we're doing the right things to provide value to the community, hitting on what they're expecting, and setting us up to be successful long-term.
Let me just add to that. I've now been through two rate request conversations with the community, and this last one was as difficult as any as I've been through, and I've now done four in my career. It's been, it was super challenging in the moment, asking the community for a rate request. One of the things that we're getting better at is listening to feedback the community's given us and trying to do something with it. And the key results really reflects the challenge that, the challenges we got from the community on things that were important to them. And so part of the conversation we're having this year about how to set metrics going forward is how to translate the tier-one metrics that we have focused on for years to something that's meaningful to our customers. In my mind, CPS Energy as a community-owned utility is only as good as our customers, you know, value the service that we provide. So we've got a reconciliation to make here on how to translate and really bridge the gap between what's been traditionally our tier-one metrics and the expectations placed on our community that crystallize in conversations that we have with the board and the city council during a rate request. We've got another rate request, you know, that is looming at the end of this year that all of this becomes relevant to. So, you know, Mr. Steen, I appreciate your feedback, and it's all relevant. I want to get 100% like everybody else does. But we've got, so we've had significant headwinds that you choose to always kind of look past in terms of supply chain and, you know, the past due balances that have been, you know, subject of every board meeting for my 18 board meetings now. And when you look at the key results, that is feedback we got directly from our community. So there is no getting around the fact that we are a community-owned utility, and if we don't figure out how to translate what success looks like from the customer's point of view, it doesn't matter if we get 100% on tier-one metrics, because our customers will continue to tell us that we've got work to do. So I'm looking forward this year to recasting what success looks like and how we measure ourselves, both from what John mentioned, how we compare ourselves to the industry, and what our customers are telling us is important to them, because that matters too.
Dr. Romero? Go to the floor.
I also want to understand a little bit more how you use both of these internally. Obviously, you're all striving to achieve these. But in terms of, at all levels, employee reviews, at what level, if any, are these used for annual reviews or raises or promotions?
So since I've become CEO, Vice Chair Romero, we have taken the business plan that we spent a lot of time on last year and have come up with a set of shared metrics that are all in line with operational transformation and financial stability, employee engagement, all the things that we suggest that are all reported in here in some form or fashion, and align those to ensure that from myself all the way down to, you know, the management level certainly, that our level of influence over success is translated into a set of shared goals. So all of these drive our goals in some form or fashion. Yes, ma'am?
Okay. Thank you. I guess I'll just say, I appreciate what Mr. Steen said. It's important that we think about these and we're thoughtful about them, but I just, I guess I don't see it quite as black and white. Sometimes I think when they're not achieved, we need to rethink what that metric is and whether it makes sense for us, or if it's something we need to think about. But you and I are on operations oversight committee, and we'll be discussing this. So I'm looking forward to that conversation for the future.
May I respond?
Yes, mister.
So, Dr. Romero, what we don't want to do is, because we're not doing well on the tier-one metrics, to say, well, they don't really matter to us. We've been using those for, I don't know how long, many years, and we're just going to have to get better. Mr. Garza, with all due respect.
And I appreciate both thoughts, both from Mr. Steen as well as Dr. Romero. At the end of the day, we have to balance economics with the social well-being, and things change. The market conditions are changing, the expectations, political things are changing, environmental events are changing. And so it's important to look to the history, but it's more important to look to the future. And so I'm looking forward, working with all my trustees, as we look at everything, not just metrics, policies, procedures. It's a new day, and there's a lot to learn. Respectfully, the boards before did a really good job. Now we're moving forward, and this is why we have committees. And so I'm looking forward to the engagement from each of you who sits here. And so let's just use the process to improve things, and thank everybody's feedback, for everybody's feedback. Yes?
I appreciate everybody's comments. I would just say I'm a big believer in that accountability flows upwards, and so that comes right to our desk right here. And so, you know, when I think about these metrics, I also, I'd love to get a grade on ERCOT, for instance. If we could do that here, I'm sure they'd not be doing as good as a D minus. But given the context of what we've been through over the last few years, when I look at the tier-one metrics and the ones that aren't achieved, what I would like to know, because these are all about choices. What choices are we making? And I appreciate the question that Dr. Romero made about, you know, what's the difference between the key metrics versus the tier-one metrics? Because that's where the decision lies. We have decisions to make with regard to our fund balance, and our days cash on hand is impacted by the fact that we've got a lot of customers in arrears. Or we could simply be another, you know, privately-held business and just go after the financial metrics, but where would that leave us with customer satisfaction? It matters to us. So in my opinion, the things that matter with regard to the tier-one metrics are decisions that we make as a board from a policy perspective. So informing the discussion about how we get these back on track, especially considering that we're still in sort of the long tail of the pandemic and winter storm Uri and dealing with some of those challenges, is in order to get these to green, what are the decisions that we would have to make to get there? Because in some cases, they're not worth the trade-off. I mean, I will tell you that we have very thoughtfully brought back disconnections. And why? Because it's not simply about getting that cash on hand back to a level if we're going to also force people to get evicted in this community. I mean, those are the trade-offs we have to make, and if it means missing our tier-one metric on cash on hand, I'd rather get that in red and have fewer people evicted in my community than, you know, just trying to reach a metric to say that we got to 70%. So they're difficult decisions, is my point. I would like for us to know transparently, so the public can hear us have that conversation, what are those decisions that we have to make? Because then we can separate what was a policy decision versus what was a mistake. And I'm willing to go out on a limb and say that since this organization has been under CEO Garza, I can't think of any things that we have done from a policy perspective that I would label a mistake. They've made, we've made some tough decisions, no doubt. Some of those are the reintroduction of disconnections, but let us see what we're doing in terms of the decisions that we're making, how they're impacting the tier-one metrics, and see if there were decisions that we would do a different way. I think we're going through this in a very thoughtful manner. It's not easy. You know, the reason why the last rate discussion was the most difficult is because we hadn't had one in eight years. Was that a mistake? We could diagnose that. Does that mean we have to rush into the next one less thoughtfully? I don't think so. So anyway, my point is that there's a greater context here than just, you know, counting the widgets, getting the percentage, and then moving on. If this organization was just about reaching those metrics just for the sake of reaching the metrics, I'm willing to bet our key metrics would be far off where they are today. Thank you, Chair.
Any additional comments? Yes, sir.
Madam Chair, I just want to make just one comment, because a lot of times, our employees watch these meetings and ask me questions about these conversations. I just want to, you know, we've had a tough few years here, and I believe that our focus is better, you know, we've got to. You know, we've got to make trade offs, as the mayor talked about, about where our focus is. We have a rate advisory committee. That takes a lot of time and effort and resources, you know, but it's the right thing to do. This direction this board's given us. We've got a municipal utility committee. We've got a lot of folks that are, that are giving us advice about how to, to, to do our business. And we've got members of the community who weigh in each and every day. I want to thank our employees for persevering through some, some really challenging times. I know that you work hard every day to make sure that we hit our numbers financially, that we keep the lights on, that our power plants are running, that we're helping customers, you know, connect to the resources available so that we get them on payment plans and, and dig into this past due balance. And, you know, you all are the heart and soul of this company, and in spite of work that obviously, you know, again, there's no hiding from what we've missed. That's why we're talking about it today. But I know you're focused, and I appreciate the fact that, that, that we're in it together, that both this board and our employees and our community have to be part of the same one team that, that's going to take to get us there. So I just want to thank employees who are hearing this because I know you're trying, and I appreciate you.
If there's no further discussion, we're going to go ahead and move to item number 10 on the agenda, CEO's closing comments.
So with respect to one of those items on the safety side, it's been, it's been years now, quite frankly, that, you know, we've set some pretty stringent safety goals for ourselves that are, you know, that we compare ourselves to our peers. And, you know, it's been years now that we've had challenges, challenges with our, with our safety performance. And, you know, you could stick your head in the sand and hope that it gets better, or you can constantly recreate your vision for your safety culture so that you're having conversations where they matter most. CPS Energy will never get there if our frontline employees don't assume ownership of what we want our safety culture to be. That means, are you stopping the job when we have questions? Is our safety training right? Are, are we having good peer to peer reviews? And are we doing, you know, our, 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 you know, field work in a way, and our observations in a way that, that continuously challenges ourselves for, you know, to do better? And so we've been spending a lot of time with utilities across the country benchmarking how they set their safety culture. And at the end of the day, it comes down to people, and people holding each other accountable, not because the CEO or the leadership team says, you know, you, you must do this or that. It's because, you know, the folks in this room around this dais are looking each other in the eye and having conversations in the field that hold each other accountable to a standard that says, the only thing that matters to us is getting you home safely to your families at the end of, of every day. So what you see here are members of the Gas Solutions Guidance Team, the Gas Solutions Grassroots Team, the Energy Delivery Services Guidance Team, Energy Delivery Services Substation and Transmission Grassroots Team, and of course, the Executive Transition Team, all of which my leadership team and I, I am a team member. I, I am not the leader of the executive facilitation team, transition team. I'm a member, and those are priorities on my, on my, on my schedule. But I want to recognize you all today. There are too many of you to go by name, but I know what you do. We appreciate you, and the only way that we are going to make our safety goals this year is for you to go out, you know, and, and, and do the good work you're doing at your work locations each and every day. It is our people who are going to be the reason why we're successful on our safety program. And today, we are recognizing our safety culture teams for the work that they do each and every day. My goal is that, you know, we'll get there this year because of you. So thank you. Patience.
Squeeze in like you like each other.
You can remove any action items.
Yes, ma'am. I have the request to recognize Dr. Femi for his past work on the RAC, along with a welcome of our new RAC member and an introduction to the board. The third item I have is that there's an item for consideration on the April agenda that was proposed by trustee Dr. Mackey. I have another item for consideration on the April agenda that was proposed by trustee Steen, and I have a request for comments to be included in the minutes by trustee Steen. That is all the open action items that I have.
That's exactly what I've heard. Mr. Steen, go ahead.
So this is, we're under Agenda Item 10, the CEO's closing comments. And so I had, I had something I wanted to, and I, and I, and I'm going to begin it by sort of giving the basis for me doing, doing it during this.
I just wanted, for fellow trustees, I just wanted to know what the purpose is.
I want to, I really want to go over because I think there's been some, I haven't been, I don't know if we're clear on this, but, but how you make inquiries at a meeting. And so I wanted to establish a little bit the basis for doing that. It was part of that disagreement at the last meeting. And then, and then I want to ask a question, and it, I could probably have gotten through most of this just in the time we spent talking.
What I would recommend is that you and I meet, and we can definitely go over this just to make sure that.
But it's specifically directed at Mr. Garza here.
But again, and Shannon, I'm going to.
Mr. Steen, you can email me, and I'm glad to respond to, to any questions you may have.
But I think it, I think it bears on this, this meeting right here. Let me go through it. I don't think it's going to take that long.
Or Mr. Steen.
Thank you very much, Ms. Gonzalez. So harking back to our last board meeting, when I was blocked from expressing my views on two agenda items, I want to begin by quoting from the Texas Government Code, specifically Section 551.042 entitled "Inquiry Made at a Meeting." And I'm quoting, "If at a meeting of a governmental body, a member of the governmental body inquires about a subject for which notice has not been given as required by this subchapter, the notice provisions of this subchapter do not apply to a statement, a specific factual information given in response to the inquiry, or a recitation of existing policy in response to the inquiry. Any deliberation of or decision about the subject of the inquiry shall be limited to a proposal to place the subject on the agenda for a subsequent meeting," close quote. Now interestingly, this very language is paraphrased in the Rules of Order for the CPS Energy Board of Trustees, which rules were implemented at the instigation of our previous chair, and this is found in Article 5 of our Rules of Order. I'm quoting, "To the extent that trustee questions are asked about a subject for which notice has not been given as required by the Open Meetings Act, the response to such inquiry must be limited to an informational statement, a factual explanation given in response to the inquiry, or a recitation of existing policy in response to the inquiry. Note, any deliberation or decision about the subject of such inquiry shall be limited to a proposal to place the subject on the agenda for a subsequent meeting," close quote. And finally, since at the last meeting, Robert's Rules of Order were cited in denying me the right to speak, here's some language from a May 18, 2022 Board of Effect article entitled "Robert's Rules of Order: How to Run a Board Meeting." And I'm quoting, "The role of the chair is a specific role with duties and responsibilities that are different than the other members. One of the responsibilities is to facilitate discussion among board members, giving each board member an opportunity to speak. An effective chair gives opposing sides time to present their arguments and invites, invites the participation of other members," close quote. So here are my two inquiries to our CEO, Mr. Garza. At our December 19, 2022 board meeting, a resolution was passed regarding CPS Energy's strategy to mitigate customer debt. The final paragraph reads, "Be it further resolved, CPS Energy Board of Trustees hereby directs CPS Energy to provide this Board of Trustees a monthly update on the effect of this comprehensive plan in addressing past due accounts. Undeniably, the spirit of that language was and is that such an update would be an agenda item for presentation and discussion at every board meeting going forward. And in point of fact, that was what was done at our January and February meetings. Indeed, it was agendized both times as Accounts Receivable Monthly Update. However, this matter was not placed on the agenda for today's meeting." And then you all correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the last Accounts Receivable Monthly Update was presented to us at our February 27, 2023 board meeting, but the information contained therein was as of January 31, 2023. So despite our December 19, 2022 resolution, the last data we've been provided is more than two months old.
You received a written report, which is in the spirit of what was approved by that resolution last week. So you've gotten one within two weeks, I mean, within the week.
So, so you say that I, that I've gotten the.
In your inbox, sir. I saw it go out myself.
All right. So in line with this board's December 19, 2022 resolution, my question to you, Mr. Garza, first, why didn't you place this matter on today's agenda?
Sir, we worked with the chair to set the agenda, and the agenda items were what, what us and the chair agreed to.
All right. And then second, will you be placing on the agenda for our next board meeting to be held April 24?
At the direction of the chair, I'll be glad to.
All right. So, you know, we often speak about transparency being one of the values of CPS Energy, and I, I guess I ask the question, what about transparency regarding this momentous problem CPS Energy is wrestling with? I think it's worthwhile that we address it every meeting. That's what the resolution says. So that, that's the point I wanted to make, and then I respectfully request that this statement be included in the minutes of today's meeting.
Justy Romero.
I'd like to get something clarified from Ms. Ramirez, because I feel like if not, we're going to keep going around and around on certain things. And, and Mr. Steen, I, I know you know the law, but I, but I have a question that was brought up by the two points that you brought up. And so on the one hand, you were talking about the language in the Open Meetings Act about the limitations on a board member when they want to bring up something that has not been agendized. And, and I heard that language all about being, you can, but, you can't go here, you can't go here, you're limited to this. On the other side, you were talking about the role of the chair to let everyone speak, which I think generally applies to agendized items. So my question is, at the intersection of these two things, to what, to what extent may the chair completely limit a board member from bringing up items, even to the extent they're limited? Can the chair just say, we're not going to discuss that item if it's not on the agenda? Is that clear what I'm saying? It's that the law says you can only go this far, but can the chair say you can't even go that far? I'd like to just get that clarified. I think it would help us have more productive discussions.
The chair sets the agenda. That's the governance laid, governance laid out in the Rules of Order for the CPS Energy Board of Trustees. And I will say, as I understood the instruction from last month, the chair asked for any comments to be new or different information that was provided before, and that was the basis for the exclusion of the commentary, not, it was not being excluded based on its topic. Today, I think is a good example of a discussion that was not related to any of the comments that Rudy gave today, but in the interest of transparency, we've gone through that discussion for that purpose. I do encourage everyone to review the document referenced. It was specifically referenced in Article 5, but I also encourage you to take a look at Article 4 because that lays out the process, the timelines, and the protocols that are utilized to put something on the agenda. And again, as I understood the objection and the end to discussion last month, it was because that process wasn't followed, not because of the content or the subject matter of the discussion. And then lastly, I will note that the monthly updates that have been sent out on the Accounts Receivable have been sent out at least once a month. And in terms of the resolution that was referenced, the December 19 resolution, that there be monthly information provided as an update to the board, I will just state to you all, I do not understand as, that as an instruction to agendize an item. So if it is your intention to do so, if you could please clarify to me when we go through that, that will help an awful lot because I didn't read it as such. I hope that helps, ma'am.
If I could just rephrase it one more time, just so I'm clear, that the language the trustee Steen cited that talks about the limitations on someone's ability to bring up a non-agendized item is not necessarily the same as saying that person has the right to bring up a non-agendized item within those limitations, regardless of what the chair might instruct.
I agree with that.
Do you mind if I respond? I, I think, I think you're, you're getting the gist of it. That's, that's why I went to the trouble to actually quote the, the statute and quote, quote a Rules of Order. But I think on a five-person board, that you ought to have a, the, the ability to ask the CEO a, a direct question, and just like it talked about, have him respond to it, and that, and that's, and then there's no further discussion or deliberation on it, except we could put it on agenda for, for, for a future meeting. But I don't think that that's restricted. I don't think that you can restrict that, especially when, that, when, when a portion of the agenda is devoted to a CEO's report, it's going to bring forth questions, and you can ask a question, you can make an inquiry, and you can get an answer.
Good. I lead discussion as always. So this concludes. Do I have a motion to adjourn the board meeting?
Move to adjourn.
Your second?
Second.
Third.
All in favor? Aye. That concludes our meeting. Thank you very much, everybody who participated, and those of you who are listening in. Welcome, everyone. I would like to go ahead officially call the meeting to order. The time is 5:30. Shannon?
Yes, ma'am. We have yourself and trustee Dr. Mackey, which I will eventually roll off my tongue again correctly. Our president, we do not have a quorum, but as we're not taking any official actions and you're not voting on anything, you may proceed, ma'am.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to ask Mr. Adrian Garcia to provide the safety message.
CPS Energy Board of Trustees. We first wanted to review the evacuation procedures so that we are prepared to be safe in the event of an emergency. If you hear the fire alarm, follow instructions announced through the P A system. If asked to evacuate, use a glass door exiting out of the boardroom to the outside. If that door is blocked, use the back door. Verbally alert others in the room and evacuate. Then move out to the main parking lot in front of the building or the AT&amp;T parking lot over the McCullough and Brooklyn bridges. In the event of a situation like this, our security team will be monitoring the situation and will notify the appropriate emergency services and team members. We also have employees nearby who are trained to administer first aid if needed. Safety is a top priority at CPS Energy, and while we hope the information is never needed, we want to be sure we are always ready. Thanks so much.
Thank you for the safety message. Ms. Lilia Carpenter, can you please go ahead and proceed with public comment?
Yes, ma'am. We'll invite pre-registered speakers to speak and name and address the board on CPS energy-related business. Speakers should state their first and last name, the organization or group they represent, and the agenda item they are going to speak about. For this meeting, we have. For this meeting, we have six registered in-person speakers. Each speaker will have two minutes to speak. Thomas, will you please cue the timer? Our first speaker is Henrietta LaGrange, followed by John Peterson.
Good afternoon. My name is Henrietta LaGrange, proud member of the Mulberry Street Girl Gang. And one of the reasons that I'm here is I don't have much of an opportunity when I'm either driving by or I see a work site, but I do want the employees to know this is a thank you, because I wish more people would care, and I mean care. Anybody doesn't, let me know. I have a good right hand. But it's because I feel like the better we treat the employees, more work we get out of them, and a happier chairman of the board, and a happier CEO, and I want that. But most of all, I it's not easy for me to be up here, because there are so many things I want to talk about, and there's a lot, believe me. But I want to thank Mr. Lujan, Mr. Medina, and Blaze. Remember, Blaze keeps me hydrated when I get here. But Ms. Carpenter, thank you very much, because she always answers my calls, and I love that because it's usually questions that I have to ask, because I like to research everything that I'm going to address. I don't want to be stupid up here, and I'm not, I guarantee you that. But thank everybody from the bottom of my heart. I appreciate your hard work, and let me tell you, the test was three days ago, one of the trees fell on the electric wires. One of my neighbors to the right and the one to the rear, they're both on oxygen. What happened? CPS, New York Minute. Thank you.
Thank you for your input. Our next speaker is John Peterson, followed by Deborah Rice.
Chairwoman, board members, hello. My name is John Peterson. I reside in San Antonio. I'm a small residential developer building duplexes and fourplexes in the city. I have one project currently underway on the northeast side near Windcrest. The five buildings in Phase One are now eighty percent complete. I'm here today to bring to to your attention a matter involving CPS Energy and hope you can help. I'm being told by your customer design and delivery department that I may need to wait another eight to twelve months or more for the installation of five transformers, because they must stay with standard allocation protocols. Background, I first my team first contacted CPS in November of twenty twenty-one, which is now seventeen months ago, and we submitted the formal request for service in February fourth of twenty twenty-two, which is now fourteen months ago. This continuing delay will have many harmful impacts, but I want to just focus on one at this meeting. Most significantly, the location the location of this project is sixty feet away from a charter school, the Harmony School of Innovation. I'm holding up a you can see the this was taken back in November, this picture with the the framing going up, but that's the Harmony School, sixty feet away from the property line. And and adjacent to this is the Montgomery Elementary School. We have five buildings that are going to be vacant with homeless people moving in, vagrant squatters, and what typically comes with that can be drug use, indoor fires, vandalism, graffiti, broken windows, trash, extrament, that sort of thing. I'd like to go on record and state the following. I see I have fifteen seconds left. CPS Energy leaving these five buildings vacant for the next six to twelve months creates conditions that are unsafe for the community and unsafe for the children who walk every day adjacent to the property to get to their schools. I'm asking the board members, please work with CPS Residential Services Senior Management and Design Delivery Staff to prioritize the project to receive five transformers. Also here behind me next is the principal, Principal Rice of the charter school. Thank you, board members.
Thank you for your input. Our next speaker is Deborah Rice, followed by Cordell Jones.
Good afternoon, board. My name is Deborah Rice. I'm the principal at Harmony School of Innovation, which sits directly across the street from the development that Mr. Peterson was discussing earlier. Currently, we've been watching this this development go up, very excited for the students that will be attending our school as well as the neighboring school beside us. It is very important to me that our students are walking to school, able to get to school on time without any derail in regards to safety is concerned. Without the transformers being put in at these buildings, we are looking at items as far as people getting into those buildings, providing, you know, occupancy for them that is unwanted and unneeded. It is necessary that we do accelerate this, you know, with the transformers being put in, so not only so our families at our campus can have a place to reside right across the street from the school, but also new families to where we can accept them into our schools and grow our community as a whole. It's necessary for here in San Antonio that we provide a strong STEM education for all of our students, which we work directly with CPS Energy as it is, to provide that strong educational support. And so with your support, we're able to get more kids into the STEM field, which are is our main focus at our campus. We are a pre-K through eighth grade campus, and we are able to service four hundred and seventy-four students currently, and we look forward to be able to obtaining even more with the development that Mr. Peterson is putting in. Currently, like he said, they only have five buildings. It is going to be increasing beyond that, which is really going to bring families into San Antonio, so it's going to be a win-win for all of us, education, families that are, you know, gaining that STEM education as well, as well as our community. So it will also bring customers for CPS Energy, but most importantly, our students is what my main goal is, and I want to see our our families happy, healthy, and in our schools. Thank you.
Thank you for your input. Our next speaker is Cordell Jones, followed by Wendell Fuquay.
Hi, Cordell Jones, private citizen. I want to start by thanking you for your time and effort in sitting on this board. You're faced with many difficult decisions. I appreciate opportunities like this for transparency, honesty, and integrity. So thank you. Three quick things. First and foremost, as you're considering the direction moving forward, please pay particular attention to our elderly population in our city. They're on fixed income, and being able to handle the rising costs of energy is just not fair to be able to or to as we start to push them out of their homes that they've spent their entire careers really trying to cherish. Second, as we consider ways to keep our energy costs down, please invest and look at every possible alternative energy source out there. And third, as a private citizen, I am deeply offended by the negligence of our state officials that have allowed our grid across the state to fall into such disrepair, and it is not right that we, as private citizens, face the cost of of price gouging and price surging, and that we're expected to foot that bill on our back. That's not okay. Thank you for your time. I yield my forty seconds.
Thank you for your input. Our next speaker is Wendell Fuquay, followed by Darby Riley. We will move on to Darby Riley.
Good evening. I'm Darby Riley. I'm a customer of CPS Energy. Last week, I guess it was, CPS staff did a really excellent job of presenting on rate decoupling at the Rate Advisory Committee, and this is something that I hope the board will seriously look at. Presently, CPS Energy and the City of San Antonio have a disincentive to promote efficiency and conservation, because doing so reduces the revenues necessary to sustain their operations. Decoupling would allow the utility to pay to pay its bills and make its necessary additional funds for the city while reducing the public's consumption of fuel. Decoupled rates are set to reward lower consumption rather than higher consumption. Decoupling separates fuel sales from profits. The rates are set to guarantee the necessary return to the utility and its owner. The utility can then promote retrofitting and distributed solar energy to households and businesses, which it has difficulty doing now. The implementation of decoupled rates is a complex matter. Utilities in many states have adopted it. CPS Energy, I would urge them to consult with experts to determine how it might work here in San Antonio. Starting with a study makes sense. Our community has nothing to lose by such a study. Presently, finances get in the way of the city's fulfilling its promise to be a world leader in the transition to clean energy. Paula Gold Williams often said, conservation costs money, but decoupling proves that it doesn't have to cost money. Thank you, and thank you for your service.
Thank you for your input. Our final speaker is Mr. Golley. Mr. Lee?
Thank you. Allow me to make some presentation. I have a lot of PDA for picture files that's not show on screen. Basically, I have work on innovation, improve solar efficiency for fourteen years. Or even at the very beginning, I work with, I say, first generation to work on solar technology as a well-thinking, he would pass the way. And my advisor, Dr. Davis, also work a lot for solar technology, fuel cell. I may be say I'm second generation to work on solar technology and other energy technology. We develop a lot, a lot, innovate technology. So we want to take a technology join, become employee of CPS Energy. Some detail maybe I show you, and here is no picture, so we don't know how to show you in some very detail, but you can see, because I already send all the information and technology to Board of Trustees. Basically, we want to work on two access, one access, scanning system. You know, the sun move from east until west. The direction, some lights illuminate perpendicular to solar panel vertically, perpendicular, then we have very, very high solar efficiency. We work on auto trucking, spend, I say, fourteen years. Some detail I need, some detail I need to see your expertise. I know very many friends here, that I can show some detail and the probably I need to teaching, how to make the two access, one access scanning system. Okay, how many time? No, no time. Oh, okay. Okay, so. And I already talked to. Okay. Okay, I had.
Thank you. Thank you so much. You have very. That was our last registered speaker. I will now turn the meeting back to Chair Gonzalez.
Hello? Okay, I think I could have done it without the mic, but to be fair to everyone, thank you. Thank you again. As a chairman of CPS, I as a freshman, one of the first things I would hear is, as a teacher, I shouldn't take time off to sign up. You know, as a working parent, as a working parent, I shouldn't take time off to to attend a public meeting. And really, we are listening. This is what this is about. When someone gets to be put in a position to lead the organization, then he or she can make decisions like this, and this is an example of the power of the chairmanship, but also the power of you as citizens speaking and and us listening, and then providing a forum that is safe for you to to come and speak in after hour. So again, our community is growing, and the way that we live and work has drastically changed, not only because of the environment, but also because of post-pandemic recovery. We, as a board, are evolving with those changes, and we look forward to receiving additional input from our community. As as you can see, we will continue to host quarterly input sessions in the evening. Today, again, is a great example of this session. I misplaced my paperwork, but for those of you who came in person, we also got some wonderful feedback via email. I believe fifty-three individuals responded to our email correspondence, and therefore we're also going to be queuing the feedback and then finding meaningful ways to present that data. Our goal is to leverage all strategic communications in the form of public process, such as this evening and monthly board meetings, as well as email communications. And those of you who love already or or opt in emails to receive emergency information is another great example how we are listening. So there are, again, many opportunities to engage with us. You know, this is there, I kind of shared a little bit of a comprehensive list of how you can do that. You could also visit our website. Our website has a lot of really good information. There's a lot of great info graphics that really make it simple to understand the complexity of the things that we're trying to accomplish. So really, again, visit the website for that. And again, we have street teams, we have ambassadors, we have the B two B Energy Program. That's another great example of how we communicate, not just to citizens, but also citizens that are business owners as well. Again, we encourage our community to learn more about us as trustees, as us as leaders in the community through, again, our community events, our monthly board and rate advisory committee. We also have the Citizens Advisory Committee as well, and then, of course, this new quarterly public input session. I want to thank my colleagues who are supporting this initiative, and Dr. Mackey to my right, Dr. Romero unfortunately had another commitment, but we're all committed as trustees. Again, I want to thank the staff who's here tonight. It's, again, a long day, but your presence matters to the community that we serve. And again, we'll continue to identify new ways where we can remain engaged with you throughout the whole year. On that note, again, thank you on behalf of the entire board and as your chairman. Again, very pleased to see many of you here today, so thank you so much. Four, is there any additional comments, Mr.? Nothing? No house, no no house? Okay. Well, that officially concludes the quarterly evening public input session. So thank you again, those of you who attended.